Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the role to establish quorum?
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Carr will be absent.
Would you all please rise, and I would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to all of you on a unique Friday afternoon city council meeting. We meet on a Friday afternoon because we are dealing with unique and extraordinary circumstances. And we feel very strongly as a city that we want to respond to this crisis with the urgency that it deserves and demands. That, as I said yesterday, we are a strong and resilient city. We will get through this together, especially if we stay together, which I know we will, and if we take the appropriate actions to both protect the public safety and at the same time recognize that there is a lot of disruption along the way and where we can make policies and/or invest some taxpayer resources in helping to mitigate the disruption and some of the damage, that it is our duty to do so. And that is why we gather here today. We also gather in a different way than usual in that the chambers are not full today purposely because we want to abide by the governor's executive order of Wednesday to limit large gatherings. And so it does make it a different kind of public participation meeting. People have sent ecomments already, but we also have our Twitter feed, which is, if I may, @CityOfSac. And through the clerk, you can email at clerk@cityofsacramento.org, and we will endeavor to take as many of those comments as possible and get them to the city council as we are deliberating. This is a work in progress, of course, as this is a unique circumstance, so we are going to proceed. We have a detailed resolution, which we will get to in a moment, and break it down by all of its important parts. But I first want to ask Daniel Bowers, who is the head of our Office of Emergency Services, to give a little bit of an overview about what the city has done to prepare for this moment since January. Bowers, please take a couple minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. What I'm about to prepare and present on the preparedness measures, it's only made possible with the trust and confidence that you all have shown me over these past two months, the trust and confidence from a city manager and my boss, Christopher Conlin, and additionally, the willingness of the departments to come together for a common purpose. With that said, Office of Emergency Management began monitoring COVID-19 in mid-January. Of notable concern based on the outbreak's rapid spread and coinciding with the Lunar New Year, which was a significant travel period, we expected that to reach our shores, and it did. In early February, OEM beginning enhancing personal protection equipment posture for first responders to ensure continuity of operations for citywide services. Also, beginning in early February, the city supported a series of N95 resource requests in coordination with Sacramento County to replenish city and regional hospitals as a result of a worldwide shortage of those masks and personal protective equipment. In late February, we placed orders ahead of global supply chain shortages on cleaning and hygiene supplies to ensure cleanliness of key city facilities, notably those with frequent public access. OEM also activated two funding lines in partnership with facilities, procurement, and safety tied to this public health emergency to compensate for the additional use of hygiene supplies in our restrooms. Understand that budgetary forecasts and so forth are being strained, as to the benefit of people additionally washing their hands, some of those supplies would dwindle. We replenished that. Recently, we also begun heightening protection posture at critical facilities, notably our dispatch and water treatment facilities to ensure continuity of essential services to the city. And last month, we supplied, trained, and tested our dispatchers on the ability to answer 911 calls while wearing personal protective equipment. In late February, OEM activated an operational planning team consisting of key leaders from several departments to ensure a cohesive, unified citywide response to assess the current operational picture and resource needs while also looking forward one to four weeks to anticipate the changing dynamics of this evolving threat. And my message to the team and my fellow city staff continues to be this one: On one clean hand, we will maintain normalcy and go about our daily lives enjoying restaurants, coffee shops, and everyday life; while on the other, even cleaner hand, we will protect our most vulnerable community members, the elderly and persons with underlying medical conditions, while also ensuring the continuity of essential city services and basically maintaining a sense of normalcy throughout our city. And speaking of vulnerable populations, while this is a public health emergency and public health has the lead in overall response, there are things the city has prepared and primed for. Beginning this morning, the city manager's Office of Emergency Management provided hygiene supplies to Sacramento steps forward, the first of what will be a cascade of support in partnership with our homeless support groups to enhance the hygiene to this vulnerable population and mitigate the spread of illness. With that said, your unified city team is prepared, I have no doubt, to continue essential services throughout the epidemic, and we will continue to adapt, enhance our posture as necessary to stay ahead of this evolving threat and safeguard our community. Ladies and gentlemen, pending any of your questions, that concludes my preparedness update.
Okay. Any question for our OES director here? Yes, go ahead, councilmember.
Daniel, can you tell us a little bit about what you've done to coordinate the handwashing stations for the homeless camps as well?
Yes, ma'am. This morning, myself and your chief of staff met with that gracious company that's willing to donate those five, hope to be soon six, handwashing stations. We met them out in the field with advocates of some of these homeless camps, and we identified some of the most beneficial places to place those handwashing stations, again, to kind of fortify and enhance the hygiene of those locations.
Am I to understand that there's also some restrooms involved at some point?
There are. We would look to coincide those handwashing stations with locations where porta-potties and portable public restrooms will be placed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Appreciate it. Before we go further, just a couple clarifications on the public input here. Shows my finesse with technology. It is not the City of Sac on Twitter, it is the City of Sac. @TheCityOfSac on Twitter. And I might also add, the other way of public input is that we do have, people do have the opportunity to write written comments from outside the chamber, and we have people out there who will take the comments and they will get to us immediately. So again, we're doing our very best in an extraordinary situation. So, as outlined yesterday in our press conference in this chamber, today we are suggesting a number of actions done through a resolution declaring the existence of a local emergency. And all of the things we'll be talking about today will come under that resolution of emergency, which we hope to pass today, and then the implementation will largely be delegated to our city manager and our city attorney and our other lead city officials. But what we want to do is go through every bit of this and have the robust public discussion and then a vote on the resolution. There are lead staff members who have already been identified for each of these items. We want to start with canceling the recommendation to cancel city permits for special events that more than 250 people may attend and that are scheduled within the next 30 to 60 days and refund the permit fees upon applications. Mr. Lada, Mario Lada, who is our YPSI director, if you would come on up?
I'm passing out a list of the current permits or application for permits that we have through the six-to-day window that we're looking at. Through March 31st, which is the governor's executive order, we have 20 applications that we're looking at. Through the six-to-day window, we have seven to nine permits that we've either issued or that applications that we're reviewing. A dozen of these have already contacted us and have self-canceled, and one of them is a council district event. That was a helicopter egg drop event that was supposed to occur outside of the March timeframe, but within, close enough within that timeframe that that has been canceled. We have pending the council decision at this meeting. We will be contacting the event organizers that have been issued a permit through March 31st and updating them with the recommendations that we get from this meeting. If you have any questions, I'm here to respond to those.
So there have been a lot of questions raised about other events that may not be specifically permitted formally by the city. I know we're having discussions about the youth pop-up events, which the city is helping to find and working out a protocol so that those can continue, which I'm very pleased about. But anything else you want to tell us about events that are not formally permitted by the city but that come within the umbrella of large gatherings?
That is correct. Events that are not necessarily permitted, for example, pop-up events, I think, are perfect example, and hotspots that the YPSI department does as well are perfect examples of those. If those events don't meet the 250 threshold, those events will continue. The community centers will remain open, although we are suspending structured programs that are associated with those events that involve maybe close contact sports, and we're retooling those events so that we can use it as an opportunity to educate the folks who show up for those events. We are communicating to minimize the attendance at those sorts of events and small gatherings, but community centers for hotspots and venues for pop-up events will continue to be available to the community, but with steps taken to mitigate and to ensure that the gatherings are as safe as possible, such as education on handwashing, supply of sanitizers and different events like that, and different supplies like that.
So bottom line, community centers open, different activities to address the moment, and pop-ups and other community events that are less than 250, we will continue with. But again, the protocols will be implemented in ways that maximize the safety of all the participants.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, one more, though. And that is events involving seniors. At our senior center, for example, what is the approach when it comes to seniors?
Similarly, our senior center, Hart Senior Center, and our Triple R sites are going to remain operational with mitigation steps taken. We have contacted our participants, encouraging them to stay away if they have alternatives that they don't have to come in. But for those who do not have alternatives and they're going to be coming in, we're going to take steps to implement social distancing, sanitizing, we're disinfecting more regularly, and we are monitoring, obviously, the participants that are there and encouraging folks, if they're sick, to either stay away or to not participate in those programs.
Okay.
We're going to remain operational as well.
Thank you. So we're going to take one item at a time, and I want to, councilmembers, you want to take it subject by subject? Yes, Councilman Chenier.
Thank you. Just a quick question. We know the school districts now are all closing at some level. Can you address fourth R and what will happen with that?
Yes. So the protocol for fourth R that we're adopting is if a school site where a fourth R program is being delivered is closed, then we will not provide the fourth R programming at that school site. And we're just following suit with the school districts on the fourth R locations.
And that information will go out to parents?
Yes, that information will go out. It has gone out.
And will the parents get refunds for the...
Yes, we are being very flexible with our refund policy, and we are going to be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, Mari, you might want to stay. There are others chimed up behind me, too. So first of all, I just want to, I want to thank our city staff, and particularly the Parks Department, and while I appreciate you and Shannon and your team at the top, I'm really talking about our city staff that are in those community centers and out in those parks. I saw staff out in the park today on my way into City Hall, cleaning and working and making sure that there are outdoor spaces. We know when these kids go home, they're not going to stay in their house, right? They're going to go outside, and they're going to be in our park system, and they're going to stop by the community center. And I just want to say how much we appreciate our city staff and how meaningful it is to us and that we'll do everything we can to make sure they have the resources they need, and we'll be relying on you to express to us what those needs may be. This goes for our libraries, our community centers, everyone out there in the parks, the police department, the fire department, all the staff that we're relying on to help us keep the city functioning. But Parks, I know, we are asking a lot of you, as we often do in these types of situations, so thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you for the comment. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this, my comment also connects with comment D about working with the school districts on the fourth R piece and other after-school programs that are with school sites. Can we please make sure that we coordinate with the school districts so not only they get a message from us, but also through the school district communication as well? I think many times they're relying on that, on what's happening on that campus, but the more touches we get on that, the better. And again, you know, just thank you again for all the staff that are out there. And I mean, today we had a full day. I mean, the city's still moving forward, we're working, and we appreciate that from the staff. But if, on the fourth R piece, if we can get a double touch on that.
Thank you. Will do.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to be clear on the document you gave us today. So if it's highlighted in yellow, that means?
That those event organizers have already contacted us.
Put it up there so that the public can see what you're talking about. Yes, can you ask again, Rick, once that's up?
If the event is highlighted in yellow, what does that mean versus the events that are not highlighted?
The events that are highlighted in yellow are the ones where the event organizer has already reached out to us proactively and asked to cancel or postpone that event.
Okay. And then the events that are not in yellow, what is the process?
the folks who show up for those events. We are communicating to minimize the attendance at those sorts of events and small gatherings. But community centers for hotspots and venues for pop-up events will continue to be available to the community, but with steps taken to mitigate and to ensure that the gatherings are as safe as possible, such as education on hand washing, supply of sanitizers and different events like that and different supplies like that.
So bottom line, community centers open, different activities to address the moment. And pop-ups and other community events that are less than 250, we will continue with. But again, the protocols will be implemented in ways that maximize the safety of all the participants.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, one more, though. And that is events involving seniors. At our senior center, for example, what is the approach on, when it comes to seniors?
Similarly, our senior center, Hart Senior Center, and our triple R sites are going to remain operational with mitigation steps taken. We have contacted our participants, encouraging them to stay away if they have alternatives that they don't have to come in. But for those who do not have alternatives and they're going to be coming in, we're going to take steps to implement social distancing, sanitizing, we're disinfecting more regularly, and we are monitoring, obviously, the participants that are there and encouraging folks, if they're sick, to either stay away or to not participate in those programs.
Okay.
Going to remain operational as well.
Thank you. So we're going to take one item at a time and I want to, council members, you want to take it subject by subject? Yes, Councilman Chenier.
Thank you. Just a quick question. We know the school districts now are all closing at some level. Can you address fourth R and what will happen with that?
Yes. So the protocol for fourth R that we're adopting is if a school site where a fourth R program is being delivered is closed, then we will not provide the fourth R programming at that school site. And we're just following suit with the school districts on the fourth R locations.
And that information will go out to parents?
Yes, that information will go out. It has gone out.
And will the parents get refunds for the?
Yes, we are being very flexible with our refund policy and we are going to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. Member Ashby.
Yeah, Mario, you might want to stay. There are others chimed up behind me, too. So first of all, I just want to, I want to thank our city staff and particularly the Parks Department. And while I appreciate you and Shannon and your team at the top, I'm really talking about our city staff that are in those community centers and out in those parks. I saw staff out in the park today on my way into City Hall, cleaning and working and making sure that there are outdoor spaces. We know when these kids go home, they're not going to stay in their house, right? They're going to go outside and they're going to be in our park system and they're going to stop by the community center. And we, I just want to say how much we appreciate our city staff and how meaningful it is to us and that we'll do everything we can to make sure they have the resources they need and we'll be relying on you to express to us what those needs may be. This goes for our libraries, our community centers, everyone out there in the parks, the police department, the fire department, all the staff that we're relying on to help us keep the city functioning. But Parks, I know, we are asking a lot of you, as we often do in these types of situations. So thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you for the comment. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this, my comment also connects with comment D about working with the school districts on the fourth R piece and other after-school programs that are with school sites. Can we please make sure that we coordinate with the school districts so not only they get a message from us, but also through the school district communication as well? I think many times they're relying on that, on what's happening on that campus, but the more touches we get on that, the better. And again, you know, just thank you again for all the staff that are out there. And I mean, today we had a full day. I mean, the council, the city's still moving forward. We're working and we appreciate that from the staff. But if, on the fourth R piece, if we can get a double touch on that.
Thank you, will do.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to be clear on the document you gave us today. So if it's highlighted in yellow, that means?
That those event organizers have already contacted us.
Put it up there so that the public can see what you're talking about. Yes, can you ask again, Rick, once that's up?
If the event is highlighted in yellow, what does that mean versus the events that are not highlighted?
The events that are highlighted in yellow are the ones where the event organizer has already reached out to us proactively and asked to cancel or postpone that event.
Okay. And then the events that are not in yellow, what is the process to move towards cancellation of those events?
So pending this, the decisions at this meeting, we will contact those event organizers that have an event through March 31st to update them of the decision to revoke the permit and to ask them to make either decisions to postpone or cancel that event.
And you have staff capacity to be able to do that?
Yes, yes, we do. And we're also going to contact the ones that are further out to tell them that, be aware that this could get extended potentially and to take that into consideration for their planning decisions.
And then my final question is, the ones that the council members know about that, for whatever reason, were not permitted, that are not on this list, should we get that information to your office immediately?
Yes, similarly, the way we work with staff to organize those events, if those are going to be canceled, yes, we can work with the council members' office on those events.
And if the council members have already canceled those events, do you still want that information?
Yes, it wouldn't hurt to have that information or if it has already been communicated to staff, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Very good. Yes, Councilman Hanson, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I see Ms. Ulich here. And one of the things, while we have these city permitted events through parks, we have a lot of bookings in Memorial Auditorium and other city facilities. Jody, I don't know if you have a list to share as well, but I know that those reservations are also impacted. And I just appreciate any update because I know concerts and other things are being canceled.
Yes, thank you for asking. We luckily enough have had, like Mario, most of the organizers have actually already either postponed or canceled through the end of March. So we'll be looking at, our first event would be Broadway Sacramento. Their gala is coming up as well as one of their Broadway shows are coming through. So we're working with them currently, right now, to find out whether or not even that Broadway show is actually still touring or not.
What is that? What are the dates of those?
I don't have those. We're actually trying to compile the next 60 days for you and we can get that for you this afternoon. But I believe it's the second and third week of April.
Okay. And I just, because we're refunding permit fees, any of our facility fees, hopefully we're doing the same thing.
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay, good.
Luckily enough, we only have one out of three buildings currently up, so that helps a lot.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, a quick correction. The cancellation of the permits will be through the next 30 days, not through the end of March. It will be for the next 30 days.
Right, we're going, the basic premise of much of this is we're going 30 days at a time. As we go through all the categories here, that we're taking up largely, you know, 30 days at a time because the situation is ever-changing. Thank you. Let us now move on to, thank you again for your good work. Everybody, by the way, city managers, working every hour possible to put this together, want to thank you ahead of time for all of that. Let's move to number two here, which is the establishment of a $1 million economic relief package for local small businesses like restaurants, retail, and daycare providers. I'd ask Assistant City Manager Michael Jasso to please come on up. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we're walking through section seven. And can I propose an amendment to the first sentence in section seven?
Yes, of course.
It should read, "The city manager and the city attorney are directed to do the following."
Okay, thank you. I did, I was told again to clarify the Twitter from @theCityOfSAC. @theCityOfSAC, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Michael Jasso, Assistant City Manager. Following the direction of council, staff within Economic Development, Office of Innovation, have been working on a small business emergency economic relief fund. So the program overview would include zero interest kind of secured loans for up to $25,000 per business, with initial loan payments not beginning kind of less than 90 days after the issuance of such loans. Up to $100 million would be available for businesses of 25 or fewer full-time equivalent employees, which includes both part-time employees as well as full-time employees in that calculation. Of the total amount, we also are recommending that 250,000 would be available specifically for micro businesses of five or fewer FTEs, which once again include both full-time and part-time. Loan funds would be pretty unrestricted with respect to the use of covering everyday expenses, operating expenses, such as payroll. Loans would be awarded on a first-come, first-served basis to those that are qualified, having been received by the city. We are looking to and have had conversations with potential third-party kind of fiscal intermediaries that can help kind of the city expeditiously kind of get the money out the door once the loans have been approved. There's been interest by a number of institutions, such as Five Star Bank as an example. Furthermore, working with our chambers, including the Metro Chamber, kind of other chambers, we are looking to leverage those resources with other resources that may be available, both from financial institutions as well as kind of other kind of third financial kind of intermediaries. So on eligibility, kind of priority would be given for for-profit, independently locally-owned businesses, but we would also be accepting applications from nonprofit 501(c)(3)'s. The priority businesses are restaurants, retails, and daycare establishments. We would require that the business have a physical establishment within the city of Chicago. Sorry, my apologies. Old habit from a world, within the city of Sacramento, as well as the, that there are existing already kind of permitted businesses within the city. There would be a necessary demonstration of financial hardship and loss and specifically identifying, so for instance, whether it's lost revenue due to less patronage or lost revenue associated with an upcoming event that has been canceled, as an example. The process is, we are actually using a portal, a system that we had already established for our kind of funding request to the city, our inclusive economic development funding. We are adjusting that specifically for this loan program. It will be available on the splash page as well as any financial intermediaries we work with. We are endeavoring to have the application portal open by the close of business on Wednesday, subject to working with our partners. Things we continue to do, we have a working group made of financial, some financial institutions and others that also has members of the investment committee. They're meeting this afternoon to help us refine this further, but also to accelerate ideas of other things we can and should be doing to assist small businesses. Office of Economic Development is also partnering on a national task force with other cities such as New York, Dallas, Portland, Seattle, that, of ED directors, economic development directors. They're specifically looking at how to target a business and particularly small business response to the COVID-19 virus. Then I'm open for questions. Thank you.
I think there are questions on this. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. There it is. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Jasso, for your work on this. During the last recession, this was something that we looked at, so I'm very happy to see us moving forward, to be ahead of the curve, to help these businesses. And I want to be really clear, one of the reasons why I think this is helpful is not only to protect fragile small businesses, but particularly workers who are impacted by the sudden emergency that we find ourselves in. And so as we look at the evaluation here, those are the criteria during the last recession, because it was a sudden drop, we saw restaurants closing quickly, we saw a lot of things that really impacted negatively not only those small businesses and those nonprofits, but their workers in particular. And that's where we want to ameliorate here. I think that while you've written priority to for-profit, I would say they should be looked at equally, given the circumstances. So that's just feedback for you. Event cancellation, we have forced, we just went over a list of a lot of nonprofits that run events as fundraisers to support their annual budget. Some of these may be rescheduled later in the year, but that is part of what my concern is. We've seen groups like Capital Stage have to cancel their shows, as well as many others that are supporting employees in the meantime. And so as you evaluate, one of the criteria, or the criteria, I hope is one of the priority criteria, is lost revenue from event cancellation. It could be a fundraiser, it could be a show. And then also operations that have to be closed down or modified because of significant loss of revenue. Those are sort of, to narrow it, from my standpoint, what would be important. I also know that just today, the federal government's declaring a national emergency, the state government has declared one. There may be other resources that come in. And so how we partner with the Small Business Administration has come up, and I know Congresswoman Matsui's office has offered to help on that front. But we should see, while we launch this with all due haste, what other things we can use to also match those resources. $1 million sounds like a lot, but it's not going to go as far as we're going to need. And Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Council, we may need to revisit this, you know, in two weeks to see whether sufficient resources are available, whether we need to identify resources to expand the million. But I also am very well aware that not every one of the applicants needs 25,000 in short-term financing. So I think we're going to have to trust our staff to make very disciplined, thoughtful estimations. It may be 5,000, maybe it's 10, but that emergency injection of capital to help people pay their employees, to cover costs for supplies, it may be to pay landlords, just to get over that hump while we work through this national emergency. So I just, as we go through this, I want to give you as much flexibility as we can and not try to predetermine upfront how it's going to roll, but we do want to very narrowly, at least from my standpoint, very narrowly focus on what the coronavirus has impacted economically, because there's such a broad category of businesses that maybe already have challenges. This will push them over the edge. So how do we really identify those businesses and event cancellation, fragility from lost customers? Those are the ones that I would want to focus on.
Thank you. All good and relevant comments. And one of the things I would expect that we will be doing is, as we both evolve and roll out this program, is that we will be reporting back to this council in that process and how we outreach to businesses and institutions.
And the last comment, it is in the declaration and it hasn't made it to your one-pager, which you may want to put on the overhead for the purposes of this. I think a very wise thing that was included here is that the impacted businesses have appropriate written sick leave policies so that we are supporting businesses that are also trying to navigate with their employees responsibly. That is in the declaration that we are adopting today, but I also want to make sure, as you pull through on some of that, we align those things. The last thing, we probably don't need to say it, but organizations that apply probably have to also abide by our, the city's nondiscrimination policies in order to qualify for that government funding.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good comments. And I appreciate, we've heard from our friends in organized labor today who said, if you're going to help a small business, right on, but let's make sure that they are also protecting and looking out for the workers as well. And so the sick leave policy is very appropriate. Okay, Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, I want to again thank the staff for putting together some of these good ideas here. One thing I do want to highlight is the component to focus on those businesses with five or fewer FTE, because those are, I think, the ones that are being impacted. And I just heard today, this early this morning, from Rossi's Catering, which is a small little shop over in, off of Broadway that relies heavily on the frequency of county, of state, and UC Davis employees and catering for that area as well, not only the daily traffic, but for them, just this recent week and the next few could completely shut down their business. And it's one of those that are the five or fewer employees. So I think that's helpful. One, they've been very vigilant and I think that's important that we help those because once they shut down, it'll be hard for them to come back up. But I'm also concerned about what our outreach efforts are for those who maybe aren't as plugged into what's happening at City Hall. Particularly, you know, I want to look at the, also the Asian and Pacific Islander businesses. We had a conversation yesterday with the Greater Sacramento Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce, who've been feeling this for a much longer period of time, early on from some unfortunate, you know, discrimination because of it being in Asian businesses and then let alone now the recent slow in foot traffic. So I want to make sure we're doing outreach so that those businesses that are also under the 25 employees or less and those that are five or less are also getting the information. I'm sure they're doing everything they can to just try to keep their business afloat now. So have you just, have you thought about, that's more of a question, what's the thought on outreach, other than just saying it's on our portal?
Sure. So one of the reasons actually that we didn't want to actually open the portal until we're shooting for Wednesday was in fact to give us a little bit of time. We actually expect to have a draft of the portal structure that we can work with by close of business today, but we wanted to give ourselves a couple of days to actually, one, get the portal open expeditiously, but also do some outreach. So we wanted to work through the chambers and many of the other, for instance, the Inclusive Economic Development Coalition, kind of that was formed as part of our kind of inclusive economic development strategy. Many of those same groups that we already outreach to as part of the inclusive economic development portal to get it out there kind of extensively as possible. We'll also work with respect to our blog site, all our partners. And I would very much encourage, you know, and hope that all council members will be available and assisting us in reaching out those communities that we may not be reaching automatically. So we're going to continue, we want to get it open soon, but we're going to be very aggressive in both a public information campaign of getting it out there. We also have our outreach staff, our community engagement staff, that's been involved in the creation of this so that they're out there doing it as much as possible. So we expect to have a robust, but we also are trying to move expeditiously and making it available.
Very good. And then I'm sure that includes our business improvement districts.
It does.
With all the property owners there. And then lastly, I also want to thank Congresswoman Doris Matsui, who's been advocating for support from the Small Business Administration to our businesses here in Sacramento.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, you know, Councilmember Hanson vocalized pretty much all of my concerns, but I do have another piece of information to offer here, somewhat related. So in my district at the old Red Line would like insight, there is an assisted living facility that has just been constructed but not yet populated and they have offered it up as a use, as a facility to house coronavirus victims if we progress to that need. So this is a very good piece of news, I think, and I believe Ms. Rivas is probably going to contact the owners and see if we can develop that possibility.
Very good. That's good. I got the same note and very generous offer. So I just want to add one thing here. A million dollars seems like a lot of money, as Councilmember Hanson said, but it really isn't, especially given the magnitude of what it means to shut down big public events and the catalytic impact on a lot of people and a lot of small businesses. And so, number one, the up to $25,000 is really, really important because to the degree that we can really target this and offer people lifeline, businesses a lifeline, for less than that, the more small businesses that we can help. So that's one. The other thing, I think we just ought to be transparent and clear about the big categories that we're not covering today, but that still are going to need some real time and attention. And the one that sticks out to me, because we're going to get to the working people in a moment when it comes to the just cause eviction, but the one that really sticks out to me are the arts organizations. Because with all the cancellations, the nonprofit art organizations are already, some of them struggling more than others. And so I don't, we don't propose an answer here today, but we're in the process of assessing what the losses are over these next weeks and we need to think through together. And we may need some help from the private sector here, too, because it can't all just be, you know, city money. But these are civic assets and to the degree that everyone can pitch in, including the private sector, to help mitigate some of the losses that are going to occur in this very, very important sector, we're trying to build a creative economy here. I'm about to give my state-of-the-city address whenever I do give it, given the circumstances here, on the creative economy. And we don't want to, we don't want to lose our assets before we start talking about gaining more assets. And obviously, we're And obviously, we're, this is all a circumstance, but I want to make sure we pay attention to that, and it's, shouldn't all be on the city's dime here. We need help from the other sectors of, of the community as well. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hector Barone, come talk to us about parking holiday and what this has achieved in terms of helping small businesses during the traditional holiday periods and how we seek to extend that during this time.
Mayor and Council, Hector Barone, Assistant City Manager. So the proposal would be to allow free parking on weekdays after 4:30 and all day on Saturday and Sunday. Now, this is very supportive of our local businesses and small businesses throughout our downtown. We can implement this today if the council directs the staff. I did want to highlight to the council that there will be a little lag in terms of what the meter says. We're programming those meters so that they can display that it's free parking during those times, but what we won't be doing is we won't be enforcing at the meter during these specific times. We will be enforcing all other parking code violations. So that's, this should be pretty straightforward, Mayor. It's all on-street meters providing free parking during the times that the council designated.
Question is, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Hanson to talk about this, and I have a question if he doesn't raise it. So go ahead, Steve. I'm just, as, the question's been raised about the Golden One Center and our obligation under the parking fund to pay off some of the debt. I understand. I just wanted to get it on the record. This does not affect our repayment on our Golden One Center obligation.
It does not. In fact, when we looked at what the potential dollar value is, it's less than 1% of our overall parking revenue. I did want to inform the council that we are seeing parking revenue trends that are a little lower than expected, about 9%, plus or minus for the last 30 days. Unpredictable what's going to happen over the next few days. So in, in the overall scheme of things, this is a small percentage of our overall parking revenue.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for embracing this recommendation, along with Mr. Chan and our parking team. Matt Ironman and his folks are awesome, so thank you, Hector. Again, a lot of this is informed by what we saw during the Great Depression, Great Recession, where streets were empty, restaurants were empty, and it had a huge pervasive negative impact on businesses, workers, and we want to get ahead of that. So one of the big messages is, much like we do at the holidays, this parking holiday says to folks, come downtown, shop, dine, keep your social distance, but enjoy. And it's not lost on most of us that it's St. Patrick's Day weekend coming up. While the parade has been canceled, there are many wonderful restaurants that have prepared to do specials, meals, all of that. I, I think that this will go in tandem with a program being worked out by Visit Sacramento, by the Hotel Association, some of our business organizations like the Downtown Partnership to create a restaurant month, much like Dine Downtown, where prefix menus will be available. People can come, enjoy a wonderful three-course meal or other specials for a certain price. This is not only to support those businesses, but their workers, to support those folks whose vacations have been canceled, their spring break trips. We want people to staycation in the central city. We want them to dine, to enjoy. And you can follow all of the public health recommendations and still continue to engage economically, socially, to the extent that it's appropriate, but to, to enjoy our wonderful restaurants, our wonderful hotels. And we, while the Golden One Center is not going to be open for large events, there's a lot of good things to do still in our city, and we need to encourage that, especially during this period of time, people not stop going to particularly our Chinese and Asian restaurants, because there's been a big misconception that those places aren't safe. They are safe. And we are also working with, and I think we'll be able to announce later today, if not next Monday, a special set of promotions with Postmates, DoorDash, and Instacart to partner. Postmates is going to waive all fees and commissions on new, new restaurants that want to join their platform so that people can order from home. They'll be running other specials. Instacart is working right now with the Sacramento Food Bank and the River City Food Bank, making donations of food available, helping to organize volunteers, and we'll have more details on those things soon. But we need to, and I think the mayor just said this very well, we need to not just quarantine ourselves if we're not sick. We need to be sure that we're out doing things to support the economy, to support each other, and that may include also volunteering. And so if you need to come downtown, I think it's wonderful to know that you will not get a parking ticket, you will not have to feed the meter. Now, there may be people who come down and just park all day on the Saturday or Sunday. I hope they're spending money. That's, that's really the key. We need to make sure we don't enter into a freefall where everybody runs away, because our central city, our city's economy is really dependent on people coming and enjoying. And I think this is one of the biggest things that we can do to send the message that you can have a great time and not have to feed the meter. So Hector, thank you for all your help and for the work that your team has done to make this happen so quickly.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Hector. Absolutely. Let me move on to the next one, and rather than discuss in detail how the school food programs will continue, I know Councilmember Ashby is working very hard with her district, with the Natomas district, and they're already working it, which is great, and to their credit and your credit. I want to just make a general statement about schools. Of all the areas that I'm most concerned about in terms of how we come together as a community, it is around the potential and inevitable closure of the schools. And of course, there are a myriad of issues. How we make sure that kids are safe, how we make sure that kids, we work with the school districts to make sure kids continue to get their education, and where will they be? Depending on their ages, for little kids, we don't want to put little kids into large daycare settings. That defeats the purpose of, of, in a way, of shutting the schools in the first place. For older kids, how do we make sure that they have additional enrichment activities to complement or to, to help make up for what they're not getting at school? And then for working parents, especially healthcare workers, how do we work with the employer community to ensure that they support their workers and at the same time, we're addressing the needs of their kids, not just healthcare workers, parents who are working in any endeavor. Certainly, working from home is an option, but there are many unanswered questions. And so over the next couple of days, we're going to be meeting with the school superintendents and our nonprofit communities to begin asking and answering some of the myriad of questions that are out there. And we may be coming back to the city council for more action around how we can address the obvious inevitable impact of closing our schools. Let's move on to the next one. This is implementing by March 20th, all legal options available to the city to prohibit the eviction of renters that are economically impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. This is an effort to address the plight of working people who fall behind on their rent because their work situation is compromised in some way that doesn't allow them to make their full paycheck. Susanna, I'm going to turn it over to you, Susanna Wood, to explain in a little bit more detail how we intend to go about this.
Yes, Mayor and Council. We're looking at, and we've done research into the city's ability, the council's ability to exercise its police power, and in that vein, be able to pass a moratorium that would address some of these direction from the council. We would present a emergency, urgency ordinance to the council in the form of a moratorium that you would adopt, and would go into effect immediately. We are completing our research and our preparation of that ordinance as we speak and expect to have it for the council consideration very, very soon. I, whenever you have another meeting scheduled.
Okay. So in that, what you're telling us is to actually implement this, we're going to have to come back in the session, which maybe we will do next week, Tuesday, which we don't have a regular scheduled meeting, but we can set one. In fact, let's, let's, let's do that so that this protection is in place, all right? Very good. Any questions on this, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, thank you. I know the Sacramento Association of Realtors sent us a memo about conditions in terms of putting in place an eviction moratorium. I think some of them have merit, so as we move forward with these discussions, Madam City Attorney, I'd like you to make sure that you have that memo and consider that as we build the, the emergency ordinance.
Councilman Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that is not yet in the declaration and we may need to add, I've just been watching California Utilities, the IOUs, the investor-owned utilities, apparently are suspending non-payment shut-offs during this period. I'd like us to extend that to our city utilities as well. And, and Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney, I don't, I don't know if we need to add that here, or if you can administratively do it under this declaration, and then we come back and clean it up later?
Mr. Manager?
I believe we can do that administratively through, through my office.
Okay.
Okay, but are we, are we making the decision to do that? Are you comfortable with that at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Assuming the council is, I mean, it's not in here, but...
Yeah, of course.
And we can add it to this if you, if you like. We have language reparations in case, or you could just do administratively.
Yeah, I think there's enough flexibility in here for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that our city utilities are in conformance with everyone else. I, I hope S-Mud follows the same lead just in this period of time as well.
But that, that's, I think this is a significant thing here. I don't want to underplay it, because it's another area of relief for people to know that if they do fall behind on their city utility bills, that we're not going to shut them off. That's really, really important, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll be back on Tuesday then to formalize the ordinance on, on unfair evictions. Let's go to the next item, and that is Daniel Bowers on the $250,000 to purchase and distribute emergency sanitation. Go ahead.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Mayor and Council. Right now, we are moving forward with unified response with county health and county entities on this. Partnerships with Sacramento Steps Forward and other key partners in the community will drive that collaboration as we implement the spending.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. I've been in touch with the county executive, and we're going to be utilizing the county's supply chain and distribution channels as well to secure some of these products and to get them out quickly into the community.
Okay. Very good. Vice Mayor? Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. We received a letter earlier today from the Sacramento Regional Coalition on homelessness, and I think it provides some important things. You had gotten up, so he just, he went to me. We'll come back. I'll just finish. It won't, yeah. I think that one of the suggestions they have here is exactly what was just said, that we're going to work with the county on these programs. Ideally, some other agencies will match what we're doing to provide that force multiplication. But also, I want to make sure that one of the things in here, I, I guess from the federal declaration, gives us an opportunity to draw down some federal funds, that emergency services grant funds through HUD that may be able to help on this as well. I believe SHRA is the lead agency on that, and so just to the extent that we're not sitting here as the housing authority right now, but to, to collaborate with SHRA on pulling down those emergency services grant funds to increase the availability. And then Mr. Harris will probably talk about bathrooms and, and stuff like that, given the impacts on the River District, but I know we're working to construct our new restroom in Chavez Plaza, but that won't be done in the immediate time, so if we do need to look at some temporary bathroom facilities, I'd like to support and collaborate with you on those.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman, Vice Mayor Harris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for getting back to me. Daniel, you know, we implemented the Pit Stop Program a couple of years back, actually it's 2016, and we still have that facility. I would like to make you aware of that, that we have that, and we, we may want to mobilize that facility as part of our response to the homelessness. The other thing I wanted to say is the preponderance of shelter beds are in the River District, and many of our homeless residents are living in very close proximity to each other, often buck beds four to a cubicle. So a, a perfect way for this virus to be transmitted easily amongst the population. I think we need to have a focused response on what would happen if there was viral outbreak in one of our homeless shelters. Again, because we have potentially a facility available to us in District 3, that might be one way to deal with this. But we need to be at least cognizant of the fact that in shelter situations, people are living in very close proximity. So, you know, the social distancing is really not happening in those facilities currently.
Right, Attorney, and that's why. So...
I'll answer that.
Okay.
Thanks. You may notice that Emily Howkin is not here right now. Chris Conlin, Assistant City Manager for Public Safety. She is right now, at this minute, in a meeting that is being done between the providers, Sacramento Steps Forward, and the Sacramento County Public Health Officer, Dr. Kishiri. They are talking about exactly the concerns that you just expressed.
Excellent.
There has been guidance released from CDC that addresses what to do in these shelters, but Dr. Kishiri is giving some more guidance to them. One of the things that, that this money that you are providing will allow us to do is some of what Mr. Bowers was talking about earlier. We've identified a critical vulnerability, and that is that many of our providers that are in the shelters, and many of the navigators that are on the streets are running short of the personal protective gear that they need, hand sanitizer, face mask, gloves, all of that, that they need to do on a daily basis. So one of the first priorities is going to be to get them that gear so that within those shelters, they can stay protected, and then also for some of their personnel that, that perhaps have symptoms, they can also provide them that protective gear so that they're not transmitting the disease.
Chris, thank you for that forward-thinking. This is a really important piece. Bear in mind, the, the Pit Stop Facility is available. Additionally, the Sacramento Groundwater Authority has received $100,000 from the state to purchase another mobile lavatory and toilet, and potentially showers as well, so we might be able to avail, avail ourselves of that possibility while to do mobile sanitation for the homeless population.
Thank you. And, and as some of you are aware, we've also had some private, some private groups that have asked to install facilities. We are considering those permits. We're looking at them, and that's another way that we're getting at the same problem, is to, to look at those and where they make sense, we're allowing them to be installed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Geta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't leave yet. I think that was a, a good segue into my question, because we've been reaching out to some folks, and also volunteers and community members have been asking how they can help, particularly in this situation. And what we want to make, what I'd like to make sure, I know we've sent some, some volunteers your way to Mr. Bowers, who want to help distribute and support the needs that those experiencing homelessness have at the moment. But one, I, I think encouraging those who want to volunteer have a coordinated approach, and also how they can protect themselves as well and follow the, the same health practices, I think. We want to make sure we, that they're also protected while they're trying to help people out. So I guess the question is, what, what is the, the best mechanism with the county and the city that, that we can direct volunteers, other than just inundating your office? Is there a process that you're working with Sacramento Step Forward as a central regional place for folks to volunteer to help out in this effort?
Well, I don't think they go wrong by that, nor do they go wrong with, with communicating with some of the many. There's up to 30 service organizations that are around the city that are doing this work. And I know that Mr. Bowers is getting ready to put together a meeting with a lot of those for talking about distribution of some of these supplies, but once we get that list set, we'd be happy to share that with all of the offices and allow those volunteers to join in. You're exactly right, Councilmember. What we don't want to do is have people kind of running out, doing stuff on their own, perhaps without the right protection out there. But certainly, the things that, that, that people need in this kind of a crisis are things like sanitation. You know, they need to be able to clean their hands, that helps them a lot, wipes help them a lot, things like that. You know, I know quite often the temptation for people, if they see our home... You know, I know quite often the temptation for people, if they see our homeless on the streets, is to give them food. Not a particularly good idea in a crisis like this, because that's a transmission source. We want to be very, very careful with that. So, far better to give them the ability to clean themselves, to give them soap, to give them hand wipes, to give them things like sanitation juice to put on their hands, than to give them a sandwich at this point.
Well, thank you, and I think to the mayor's point, that, you know, the city can't do this alone, and I think that if we can marshal the resources also from, say, our partners at Sacramento Area Congregation together, I know many of the parishes also support folks who are experiencing homelessness, but making sure that we're getting them that guidance and directing them to maximize our effort, I think is going to help us well.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for answering that question.
Excellent. Councilmember Ashby?
Mayor, I have just a couple of quick things. First of all, I wanted to thank these two, as we're talking today, and I know a lot of people are paying attention and wanting to know the up-to-date of what's happening around the city, and things are changing all the time. And one of the things we've talked a lot about is partnerships, and we have some going, and I'm very proud of you for those. I want folks to know that we're in extraordinary levels of communication with our neighboring counties and school districts and the state, and also the healthcare providers. And what some of those partnerships look like, the healthcare providers in this region are notoriously generous and have helped us many times over with shelters or whatever crisis we're in at any time. But on occasion, the city has the opportunity to help the healthcare providers, too. And I would, I just want to thank the two of you for spearheading an effort to help Sutter, particularly their emergency room, when they did not have enough masks, when there was a shortage. It was the City of Sacramento, the Howard Chan, and the Office of Emergency Management that stepped in and provided, I'm actually not sure how many, masks. Do you want to say something about that?
We've done several resource requests to hospitals here inside the City of Sacramento, and we've also helped them out, extending beyond to Yolo County, in coordination with Sacramento County, of course. And I mentioned it earlier about searching personal protective equipment, including masks, out to first responders, but we gave them additional ones, not just for them, but also in case they came upon somebody who was exhibiting symptoms, so they could put a mask on them, so that they have to, did have to transport that person to a higher level of care. We know that the best way to mitigate that spread is to have that individual who's sick themselves have a mask on them, so we've taken that initiative as well.
I thank you very much. I think, just want folks to have a certain level of comfort, that there's a lot of effort in the background to work together, even on the details. And then I also wanted to let my colleagues know that it sounds like we might get an announcement out of Sacramento County Office of Education here shortly, that the school districts will all be shutting down for, I think, three weeks.
Three weeks.
I think there's maybe some clarity around SacCity Unified, but Placer County and SAC County have agreed to this jointly. So, this is great. I'm very proud of our council and everyone up here for so proactively trying to stay out in front of this, which is really, you know, largely led by our Office of Emergency Management, but I have received nothing but positive comments from folks pleased with the City of Sacramento trying very hard to wrap our arms around each one of these issues that are impacted, whether it's our school districts, or the homeless population, or the children, or the meals. I'm very proud to be a part of this council on this day, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make sure that I understand the robust education opportunity that we have here, and that we have a plan to educate those who we're trying to give supplies to, and that we're not just giving them supplies, but we're also educating them on ways not to transmit the disease. And I just want to make sure we understand that, because if not, then we don't take advantage of the many volunteers that we have and the many community-based partners that we have. So, I just want to know that we have a robust educational campaign that's going out with these type of supplies.
Yes, sir. And one of the inclusions in the kits that we were planning to give out to our unsheltered population, particularly the homeless, in addition to what Chris Conlin said about the hygiene supplies, is there would be a card in there based off the latest CDC guidance and public health awareness messaging to them. Notably, what to do if you exhibit symptoms, who to call, how to do that, and then also what some of the symptoms are, so that they have an idea of what they're dealing with.
And I think I'd add to that. That's part of the education that's going on right now with those providers, with Dr. Kishiri, as she's talking to them about how they should operate, and also what they should be telling their clientele, the people that they're working with. And I'd also roll back to when Mario Lara was up here, and he was talking about what we're doing in our community centers, that part of what those program changes will be is to educate all of those kids and families that are coming into our community centers on protective measures. Same, same is being done in my discussions with Richard Dana about the pop-ups. That's exactly what they're going to do with the pop-ups, too. They're going to change the venues a little bit, make them a little safer according to the COVID requirements, but at the same time, they'll be educating all of the groups that come in about how to wash their hands, how to take care of themselves, the signs of the disease, the symptoms of the disease, so that they have a better understanding, and hopefully can take that back to their families as well.
Okay, thank you. One other comment on the sanitation issues relates to the homeless, but even broader. We have all seen the news reports of long lines around Costco and other places with people buying up sanitation supplies, and I've heard from a number of members of the faith community who are very concerned that there isn't going to be anything to purchase to help alleviate the sanitation crisis among our homeless population. And it begs the question, is there a way, as government, working with the state and federal government, that we can procure supplies essentially on a wholesale basis, so that we can, with the county, ensure that there are adequate supplies for the faith-based congregations and the nonprofit providers? Because this is, I mean, we talk about panic, right, and trying to avoid panic, and it's troubling to me to see these long lines with people who may not be in as much need, frankly, hoarding supplies. Where that's going on, it should stop, because there is a real public health issue among those who are trying to serve the less fortunate, especially the homeless. And is there a way that we can be a wholesaler in some way to ensure that there are adequate supplies for the people serving those in need?
Part of what your vote today to enact an emergency measure will do is to allow exactly that, to do sole-source procurement, to be able to use the federal funds that come our way, state funds, and to work with the county and our other emergency service groups to be able to go to those suppliers. The other thing that happened, and I think Councilmember Hanson referred to it, there has been a national emergency declared, and part of that national emergency is to mobilize all of the manufacturing in the United States around certain critical items, and some of those critical items are exactly the things you mentioned, Mayor. That's the, you know, the hand sanitizer, the wipes, the mask, the gloves, all of that, because it's in short supply, not only here, and at Costco, it's in short supply across the country, and quite honestly, across the world right now.
Okay. Yep, yep.
Thanks, Mayor. Chris, since you brought that up, as much as we're trying to ramp up production around those hygienic supplies, I understand that there are some employers who are in the critical response path for developing potentially vaccines, whether they're laboratories, biotech companies, hospitals, research institutions. I don't know if we've identified them, but I did get a call from one in the city today that was worried that they were going to be shut down. I assured them that there was no information present from the state or county that that was the case, but you may think about how to address that if it comes up, because we just want to make sure that those critical facilities that are part of that response infrastructure, they don't feel like they're impacted unduly as they continue to try to generate medical response.
Okay, maybe we can talk afterwards. Did they give a reason for why they might be shut down?
They are not shutting down, but given the governor's proclamation yesterday, given a lot of uncertainty coming out of federal government and others, they weren't sure, and they were just being super cautious and prophylactic, excuse the expression about that, but they weren't sure if the city was keeping a list of certain facilities that were part of that critical infrastructure for medical response, not just the public, but also the private.
Yeah. Part of the city plan is to maintain all critical medical infrastructure, because it's part of our response system, especially in a situation like this, as a pandemic. It may be that they're kind of a smaller niche, sort of an outfit.
When you say medical response, I think of the emergency response system, hospitals, clinics, emergency vehicles. They're on the research, development side to responding to the pandemic, so they would be outside of that particular scope.
Okay, well, we can talk after.
Okay. Let us move now to the last item, which is working with the Central Labor Council to assist impacted workers dealing with unemployment, paid family leave, disability insurance, unemployment insurance, paid sick leave, and workers' compensation. Now, we don't have members of the public here. Mr. Sasso is not here, but we are working, just as it says, collaboratively with the Central Labor Council. They've offered to take the lead here in doing just what the resolution says, and we have offered our city assistance in any way to them to help. It does beck the broader question, because this question of hotlines, right? Everybody wants to know who they can call whenever they have a question, and some are issue-specific, depending upon the sector. In this instance, we're talking about workers who are having issues as a result of the situation. What can we do with 3-1-1, either to work with the Central Labor Council on this specific piece of it, but even broader, to work with the county, to make sure that there are a couple of central places that people can call easily when they have a question about anything that may be impacting their lives?
Sure, we've been in touch with the Central Labor Council, and we're in the process of getting some scripts from them that we can relay and reiterate through our 3-1-1 system. Also, to have that as part of an online, I guess, contact numbers that they can reach if they come through the city's 3-1-1, but we've not connected with the county yet on that, but I believe that that's going to be one and the same, because we're referring in many instances to the 2-1-1 line from the county.
Love to get to a place where, in the next couple of days, we're with the county, with the labor council, with the other, with our business stakeholders around the portal and all this, where there's just a place where there is a live, informed person around the clock who can help triage and direct people to get the help that they need. Fair. Okay. We finally move to giving the city manager the authority to spend...
Can I read something?
Yes, go, go.
So, Mr. Mayor, on Section 7, I'd like to read a few things into the record. On item Section 7B, prior to the current sentence, I'd like it to read, "Establish a multi-year operating project and transfer $1 million from the general fund balance to establish a $1 million economic relief package." And then, in Section 7F, at the beginning of the sentence, I propose that we add the following language, "Transfer $125,000 from the general fund balance to," and then continue with the sentence.
Two fifty.
$250,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that is the last item, to give the city manager that expenditure authority up from $100,000, I believe, and we completely trust him, and the public should too, so there we go. That is the resolution. I do have one other broader item I want to discuss. Is there, Councilman Warren, on the subject? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I brought up yesterday the idea of extending project approvals for an additional year in light of what's taking place, and a number of the financial markets are gyrating. People are concerned about projects, and as you know, we have a severe housing shortage, and we do not want to further complicate the issue. And I think it was noted previously that during the last recession, 2008, '09, the governor had issued an extension, an automatic extension, on maps that were approved and project approvals, and I'd like for this council to consider the same thing for essentially a one-year extension on projects, so that they have an additional year to kind of figure out where things are going with the financial markets, and they can do appropriate planning. So, I know we're going to come back next week. I know the city manager is doing some work on that item, so hopefully, something we can have agendized and voted on very quickly.
Yep, we'll come back with the city attorney next week with that update.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, Mayor, you, myself, Councilmember Guerra, had a conference call with three of the food delivery companies, Postmates, DoorDash, and Instacart. We made a request to them to do certain, to help us with food security and food access, and I know I mentioned this earlier, but now we have some more specific details about what we'll be able to announce, and I just wanted to share that. Councilmember Chenier's office also was involved in helping on a food bank part of this, but Postmates is doing a small business fee relief pilot. They're going to waive commission fees for small businesses to use the platform, so that brick-and-mortar stores, who are being the hardest hit, will have a new source of business to support them. They're also going to provide food donations. Leftover meals can be donated by restaurants to local food banks using the Postmates platform, and River City Food Bank has agreed to take those donations and help with the distribution of them. DoorDash is going to expand their partnerships with local food access nonprofits, including Fresher Sacramento, to deliver 15,000 healthy, low-cost meals to five at-risk communities in the city. They'll work with the city staff and our offices to determine the five communities in greatest need. And then finally, Instacart has just announced that they're going to give $25,000 to River City Food Bank, and they'll be working out a similar commitment with the Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services, but they're still in conversation. So, helping ensure that not just the schools and what they're doing to ensure food access to kids who aren't free and reduced lunch, but also adults and other types of families also have access to food.
That's great. That's really good work on that, Steve and other members. It's really a good denouncement. Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, one, thank you to Councilmember Hanson and to you, Mr. Mayor, for coming into the call and putting in the hard ask of saying, hey, can we do something substantive here to deliver this?
Deliver us something.
Deliver us something, no pun intended, you know? But really, for, you know, many of the storefronts who rely on foot traffic and may not see it, and some who may not have used these platforms and have no other option on how to be able to attract their business. And lastly, making sure that folks who don't have access to food and most of the time rely on going to the food banks, and also the challenges that the food banks are going through right now, too. I think there's going to be a meeting next week with all the food banks in the state to try to look and prepare for what's going to, what the challenges are going to be happening in the future, so I just want to say thank you for that, and I think another example of how everyone's picking up a little bit to try to address the issues to come.
Everyone is chipping in, and that's where I wanted to sort of end this a little bit before we take a motion in a second. The city obviously is not responsible for every piece of the response to the coronavirus. I mean, we're not the public health authority, for example, that's the county. We're not the nonprofit community. We're not the business community. We're not the labor community. And yet, I think our authority, if you will, and our responsibility comes a lot from being the conveners-in-chief, and people are looking to us to help bring all these various sectors together. So, in talking to Councilmember Chenier earlier today about how it is we take what we have started here today, and how we continue to elevate over the next couple of weeks, and where council leadership, continued leadership, would be especially important. If we were to break down some of the categories that we are responsible for addressing, at least as conveners, and you look at childcare and kids as one category, you look at food as another, that we have talked about, you look at homelessness, you look at the CBOs and nonprofits and how we can work with them, you look at the small business issues, you look at health and safety, you look at housing, and you look at workforce displacement. If we were to break this down, and I don't know whether we need eight categories or not, but into several categories, and I were to ask each of the council members who had the time and the ability to lead one of these task forces and convene the various stakeholders, and to help work with our city teams and our other, and our community stakeholders to try to drive what we, courtesy of Councilmember Chenier in his office... Chenier in his office, and were to drive towards more action in each of these categories, I think it would be helpful. I know I'm doing a lot of convening. That's sort of my job and my role here now. Like I said, this weekend, we're going to be meeting with the school district superintendents. The decision has been made to shut the schools for at least three weeks in the Sacramento area. And the next question is, what are the impacts? And how do we mitigate those impacts? So we're going to convene around that over the weekend. We don't have to make these decisions right now, but I would like to talk to you individually and see if any of these categories capture your attention and interest, and whether or not any of you would want to lead any of these particular categories and become the conveners-in-chief here. Not meeting to meet, because we all have enough meetings, but to actually take the lead and help us as we are all trying to address the various strands of this crisis. Vice Mayor? Jay, do you want to say anything about this? I'm going to turn to Jay first.
So, thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief on this. This kind of came out of a call that I got from one of our providers, saying, I'm getting calls from too many people, and I'm not quite sure how to deal with that. We don't really have a hub. And as I was kind of thinking, you know, we're doing a lot of scattershot stuff, all good, but how do we structure the work that we do so that we can be really effective? Today, Mr. Bowers has been working as a first step for the last few months. Today was a second step in adopting the pieces that we will adopt. But I think that as a council, we don't have all the ideas, and we don't have all the capacity to do implementation. So how do we really involve those who are going to be impacted most as we go forward? I think this is a real chance for the city to work best and engage our population in some really important and necessary pieces. And I think, for example, what Ms. Ashby worked with Perfect Union was great, and the fact, I think there's a lot of Perfect Unions out there who are willing to come in and help, but we need to really provide that lane for folks to work in. So we put this together. This was kind of a last-minute, you know, two-hour drill this morning, but willing to obviously kind of work with it and thinking about what are the categories and who should be at the table at the onset so that we can come up with the best solutions possible. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Let's hear from Vice Mayor Harris. Thank you.
Mayor, you know, I've had a very keen interest in homelessness as it's so profound in my district. I'd be happy to work on this.
You are so appointed, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Seriously. This is what we need. You know, we're going to work as a team here. But if people are willing to take the lead and then coordinate with my office and with the city manager's office, we'll get a lot farther here. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor. Last night, I received a call from one of the school board members at Sac City Unified, asking if there was a forum where the agencies were getting together. I understand that the school districts may not be involved at this point from a leadership standpoint in the OES conversations. Maybe that's changing, Mr. Bowers. I don't know. But Mayor, one of the things that was suggested is that you or somebody of your stature convene a representative elected from some of those entities from Sacramento County, just so that there's a forum to ask questions, to be coordinated.
For the school districts themselves?
So, this came from the school districts because they're not typically, I don't think they typically have OES kind of staffing. But I don't know if there are any other entities, you know.
So we would convene a public forum where the public would have the opportunity to ask about the impacts of the school closures?
No. Just the electeds are feeling like the communication from the county and others
The electeds.
isn't flowing through to the other agencies.
Okay.
And so I don't know if there's already a response on that front, Mr. Bowers, but
I do not know of any school districts that have an emergency manager with them. Generally, a lot of that times, it falls to the safety or risk management type realm for that. I know that several school districts have taken the initiative to send me over the past couple of years their emergency operations plans, their evacuation plans and such. So I know they lean forward into preparedness. I cannot speak to what communication that they've had or haven't had with the county. However, I would be happy to help guide and mentor similar to how I've been communicating with you, pretty much on a weekly, if not more frequently, basis for the past couple of months along this.
And there's two strata to it. One is the policymakers who are elected, and Mayor, maybe it's the universities, the community college system, and then the school districts, because I think those are the biggest entities out there. And then the other is just the staff coordination. What I suggested to the school board member was that the superintendent appoint somebody to be the staff lead for the district. I don't know if that's what's going to happen, but that was what I suggested, so you'd be able to coordinate with something.
Yeah. We'll take that up this weekend in these conversations around schools, because that's what the weekend is going to be about.
And then just on this proposal from Councilmember Chenier, I am very interested in helping to make sure that this small business program works. There may be other council members that are interested in that, too. But the housing piece and the small business piece are the two that I'm the most eager and knowledgeable about.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris?
Mayor, just another announcement. I just got word from the diocese that the diocese and schools will be closed for the next two weeks.
Okay. So we need a motion and a second on the resolution, moved by Councilmember Hanson and seconded by virtually every other member of the city council. It was Mr. Harris, probably. It was Warren. Councilmember Warren. There we go. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That passed unanimously. Thanks again to the entire team, including the city staff, the attorney, the manager, everyone for pitching in here, and the council members as well for your hard work and showing up on a Friday afternoon. Okay, we're going to meet again Tuesday. Would that be an afternoon, an afternoon meeting? You want 3:00?
That's what time it is.
By 3:00 on Tuesday to take up the rent eviction measure and anything, moratorium, excuse me, and anything else that may come up in the meantime. All right? Nothing further? We are adjourned.